Good afternoon, we're convening the Committee on Water and Land here in Conference Room 229. And we are on Monday's agenda of March 21st, 2022. This hearing is being streamed live online. We will be taking testimony from folks who are in person and online. In the event we are cut off due to technical difficulties, we'll have to abruptly end this hearing and reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at the end of our agenda on Wednesday, March 23rd, starting at 1:00 P.M. Members will proceed with Governor's messages. And the first up is Governor's Message 683. This is submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Land and Natural Resources, gubernatorial nominee Amy Barnes for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. Testifying for DLNR, Chair Case, Aloha.
Aloha Chair Anoy, Vice Chair Revere, members of the committee, Suzanne Case from the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Thank you for hearing the Governor's nomination of Amy Kennedy Barnes to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. We're very excited to have Amy as a nominee. She brings nearly 20 years of experience in climate and energy and environmental issues in Hawaii and California and internationally. And so she has a very broad educational and work background that is very well suited to the work of the land board, particularly at the intersection with climate change, which is, as you know, is our overarching issue. She's the principal of Pu'anani Partners, which is a small woman-owned consulting practice in policy, focusing on climate change and also is a director of the Policy Lab at Elemental Accelerator. So we're very, very excited again to have her expertise on the board and thank you very much for your consideration of the nomination.
Just to add Chair, and my understanding is the appointment came last year, so she's already had her briefing and been on the--
Yes, she's been-- had initial training and she started in January of 2022. So she's been on the last several months, yeah.
Thank you. Mahalo, Lehmana Damate, testifying for Hawaii State Ahu Moku.
Aloha Lehmana. Aloha Chair and Senator Revere. My name is Lehmana Damate. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii State Ahu Moku. You have our written testimony in front of you and we stand on that in strong support of this nominee. We have a chance to talk to her with our Kanonhi people and found her to be open and warm. She listens closely. She's familiar with the six moku of Oahu, Eva, Kona, Ko'ola Poko, Ko'ola Loa, Wai'alu'a, and Wai'ani. We believe that she-- we've actually seen her in action on the land board. And she's always been fair and meticulous and we're very, very grateful that she is agreed to serve. Thank you.
Mahalo, thank you very much. For GM 683, we've had communication, 25 in support, no opposition, and one sent in for comments. The Chair at this time would like to welcome Amy Barnes. And as well, we do have one more after Amy. And the Chair would just want to add as well, and I'm happy Amy that you've already started your attendance at the Board. But just to let you know as well that hopefully you've had a chance to understand your mission for the Board as well. And Chair Case is usually good about the briefings that she's done with all incoming Board members. And just to reiterate, the mission of enhancing, protecting, conserving, and managing Hawaii's unique and limited natural, cultural, and historic resources, held in public trust for current and future generations for the people of Hawaii'i and its visitors in partnership with others from the public and the private sector. And just to reiterate as well, hopefully you've gone through this. You know, the Constitution on Article 11, Section 1 talks about the public trust doctrine and the public land trust. So having said that, welcome.
Thank you. Well, thank you Honorable Chair, Senator Revere. If you don't mind, I have just brief prepared remarks that I'd like to share.
Please, yes.
I'm very humbled and honored to be here with you today and grateful to Governor Ege for the opportunity to serve as a member of the Board of Land and Natural Resources. Thank you both for taking the time to speak with me in advance of this hearing and thank you both also for your public service. I would like to begin with a land acknowledgement of the land that we are on today, which seems fitting as a member or hopefully future member of the Board of Land and Natural Resources, which is located in the Ahupua' of Waikiki in the Moku of Kona, on the Moku Puni of Oahu, in the Pa'aina of Hawaii'i. As native Hawaiian, this is the land of the bones of my ancestors. My ancestors come from theaina of N'ouanu, Oahu, Ka'ua'ua'i, and Hawaii Island. Some of my family names include Barnes, Hano, Ke'ave Ma'ohili, Kalani Opuu, Kalani Nui Amama'o, Ke'ave Iki Kahii Ali'i'o Kamoku, Lonuma Ai Kanaka, Ke'akamahana, and Ke'ali'i'o Kaloa. I recognize that generations of my ancestors' knowledge shaped Hawaii in sustainable ways that allow us all to enjoy her gifts today and for this I am grateful. As a member of the Board of Land and Natural Resources, I will bring nearly 20 years' experience with climate and sustainability issues across the public, private, and nonprofit sectors. I believe that Hawaii can and should be a beacon for sustainability and climate action and that the land board has an important role to play in helping the state meet its ambitious climate goals, including through conservation of our natural and working lands. I recognize my kuli'ana, both my responsibilities as well as my privileges to care for thisaina for the many generations yet to come. I also recognize my kuli'ana to invite each of you to help me in this important endeavor and I do so at this time. In closing, I would like to thank Chair Case for all the knowledge she has already shared and training, my fellow Board members from whom I've already learned a great deal, Lehmana Damate and the Ahu Moku Advisory Committee for meeting with me and sharing their cultural ike with the Board, all those who submitted testimony regarding my nomination, and my family who's with me here today, particularly my husband Jacob and our children Portia and Roman for their support and grounding, and my parents, particularly my mother, a retired special education teacher who is here today, who instilled in me the value and kuli'ana of public service, and my grandparents, especially my grandmothers, Auntie Honey, Sarah Po'ala Barnes, and Portia Albi, each in their own way who rooted me in this place. Mahalo for your time and attention and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you very much. And we want to thank you as well, you know, for putting yourself up before a very busy Board. And we appreciate, you know, your acceptance as well. We have a time for us to ask some questions. The only thing that I do want to stress is if there's anticipating of any conflict of interest in anything that comes before the Board and how you see that as well in the event it occurs.
Absolutely. So I have served on and managed Boards, government, state-level Boards in the past, so I understand the importance of disclosure of any perceived or actual conflicts of interest and the need to recuse if there is an actual conflict of interest. I would work with Chair Case and the Attorney General's Office to understand whether the potential or actual conflict of interest does exist and then act accordingly based on their guidance and my own judgment, which would certainly invoke the precautionary principle. In other words, I would recuse myself if there was any presumption of conflict.
And another point too is that you'll be able to also check all of the agendas because they plan it way ahead of time. So, you know, I think just to ensure to give you time as well and the courtesy that you need to speak with the Chair as well and the AG on it. So you can at least prevent any last-minute decision-making that a Board will need to do. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Senator? Revere? Any questions you may have?
Yes, thank you for the conversation the other day. Enjoyed that and we had a--
Thank you.
--general conversation on many, many issues. And so just for purposes of this confirmation hearing, I want to circle back or kind of ask for a couple more questions on this subject. And I'm asking all the nominees this year the same questions. Your understanding of, you know, the priorities of water in this state, how would you describe the situation? Because the Board does come into sometimes controversial questions. So how do you see water policy from your point as somebody managing this resource?
Absolutely. My understanding is that, you know, our purpose and mission is really driven by serving the public trust and so this requires balance between different potential users of water resources as well as balance between the needs of current and future generations as Chair Anoy described. And so in terms of water uses for the state, I think it will be critical for the Board and for me as a Board member to keep that sense of balance and those different competing interests, sometimes competing, not always competing, but sometimes competing interests in mind. I know that you have asked in particular about stream diversions, priority of water uses and stream flow priority. I think obviously that's something that I will be required to look at on a case-by-case basis as a member of the Board, taking into consideration the staffs and metals that are proposed as well as the public comment that's presented in the course of the meetings. But I do see that, you know, as we are responsible for the public trust, that includes the use of uncontinued flow of water in streams as well as for stream health and biology as well as for use by people and industry and other uses. So I think we have a job to do in thinking about how to balance all of those different uses in a careful way.
Yes, and I think in your background with, you know, climate change, sustainability, that focus, you're probably in a good position of hope and the importance of keeping as much water in the streams as possible for the wildlife and fishing, movie vine, everything else that's going on in the nearshore waters.
Absolutely.
It's dependent, right, on proper stream flows. What about-- do you have any position or thoughts on community-based fishery management? In particular, when you have a conflict between maybe what people in that area think versus broader state or other people, maybe from different areas? How would you reconcile these things? That's a lot of what we talked about the other day. But what do you think of community-based fishery and the management programs?
I think there is incredible wisdom in community-based resource management. And so I think understanding and really learning from that community wisdom is incredibly important. And then again, thinking about how to take that community-based knowledge and get into consideration alongside the knowledge that may come from the department, from universities, and others. I think that considering and combining all of those different types of knowledge makes our decisions stronger.
And then the final question in this is, you know, land division is a big part, managing the lands, leases, revocable permits and whatnot. Do you have any thoughts on the state of our land management?
Sure. That's another complicated question, so I'll try with a short answer. When it comes to revocable permits, my experience in the Board to date has been that it's a complex issue. There are many of them. Again, we're responsible for managing the public trust, which includes making sure that the permitted use of those lands is, you know, to the benefit of all of us. That includes obviously the financial benefit, but also the continued beneficial use of those spaces for current and future generations. When I think about it from the perspective of being a small business owner myself and what I would expect from, you know, either a client or somebody that I was working with. I know when you spoke with some of the appointees on Friday, there was a question about, you know, what do you do with leases that are coming up to the end of their term? And, you know, I think as a business owner, obviously it's your responsibility to keep in mind the term of your lease and to behave accordingly. At the same time, for us as the Board, it's our responsibility as the Board to engage with those leaseholders in ways that are predictable, that they can understand, and again, that act in the interest of the public trust.
Yeah, sometimes it's always situational-based, right? But the general progress, of course, is I think, again, all of these things point back to the public trust and the responsibility of protecting the state's interest and hopefully fomenting business that is good for the individuals and the state.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, thank you for those answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much and we'll call on the next PM. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay. Members, we have GM 683 and this is submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Land and Natural Resources, gubernatorial nominee Wesley Woon for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. And we all know him as Wesley Ka'ivi Yun. Okay, Chair Case.
Thank you Chair Anoy, Vice Chair Revere, and members of--
Senator, yeah.
Senator. And members of the committee, Suzanne Case, Department of Land and Natural Resources, thank you for this opportunity for the nomination of Ka'ivi Yun to the Board, land board. He's been on the Board for two years now. He's finished out a previous term and so this will be the start of a new term for him. He's been a great person to be on the Board. He's got a wealth of experience in land management, cultural practices, and business. A really broad background, but particularly interesting background for the land board. Right now, he's the Vice President of Operations at the Bishop Museum, which is a great, great position to have. And previously, he actually served as the Architectural Branch Chief for the DLNR State Historic Preservation Division. And before that, he worked at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs for seven years. So again, he's got a wealth of experience. And I have to say, one of the things I particularly enjoy having him on the land board is his sense of fairness and also his desire to bring communities together, especially when there's disputes that obviously need to be worked out. And he's often encouraging parties from different sides of a dispute to really sit down and work things out with a spirit of aloha. And I appreciate that very much in addition to his thoughtfulness on issues. So thank you for this, for your consideration of his nomination.
Thank you, thank you. Testifying for the State Ahu Moku, Lehmana Damate, aloha.
Aloha Chair and Senator Revere. Lehmana Damate with the Hawaii State Ahu Moku. You have our written testimony in front of you and we stand, strongly stand in support of Wesley Ka'ivi Yun. I just wanted to say that we have had the opportunity to see him and to actually come before him on the land board. He's always, always been open and thoughtful and Chair Case pretty much said how the rest of us feel about him. There are-- he's particularly challenged because there are 46 moku and 606 Ahupua' throughout the Pa'aina, throughout the state of Hawaii. He is able to relate to each one of them. So he is an asset to have on the Board. He makes some strong decisions. There are times we agree to disagree, but very few times, you know. Basically, all I can say is he's native Hawaiian. His na'au and his ike comes strongly through and we're always very grateful for that. So we stand in strong support of him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, mahalo. We did have a communication from one other as well. So we've had four GM 686 in support, two and no opposition and comments from one other. Mr. Yun Ka'ivi, aloha, welcome.
Aloha Chair Anoy, Senator Revere. Good to be here.
This is your opportunity. Well, we're happy amongst the five of you that this committee has been through or will be after our final two, that we have one at least that have a little more experience because you were here two years already as well. So please, share with us.
Thank you Chair.
You're not going to give a resignation. You're going to say how great you're enjoying the Board.
Thank you Chair, Senator Revere, and thank you Suzanne for the very kind words and Lehmana. Thank you so much. It's always hard hearing such loving support, you know, publicly about oneself. So I'm glad I'm wearing a mask so you can see that I'm blushing actually. I didn't prepare anything like Member Barnes did. And I didn't have any onboarding from the Chair. I came in just at the beginning of COVID and literally thrown to the wolves and snakes and tigers and everything. So I had to hit the ground running. And you know what, I think it was fine because I just had to learn faster. And some of the things that I've learned are so valuable sitting on the land board and I'm just honored every time that we meet.
Well, you know, I'm very impressed with your background as well and as highlighted by Chair Case. And not only being on the Bishop Museum, but you've also been at OHA. So, and you know, finding one to fill a vacancy with regards to cultural backgrounds is pretty difficult at these times that, you know, we have people-- we always have vacancies on boards and commissions and it's not easy, you know, finding the fit. And so having said that, you know, it's so important because you fit the role of a cultural representation. And so it's so important with what you do at the museum as well as the role you play with OHA as well. Now, the question I would have with regards to the time that you've been at OHA is-- and for OHA who is very active with any activity that we have here during our legislative session, there might be maybe some disagreements maybe with an action. And so how would you look at anything that has to do with probably even the discussions on leases as well? And OHA takes another position. Has any of those actions come before you in these last two years? I'm curious.
Directly from OHA?
Yes.
I don't believe so. No, I don't believe so. But, you know, having worked for OHA for seven years, I can attest to the fact that, you know, this is a very dedicated and passionate bodies of people with a very specific mission. And I think to some of the comments made earlier about me, I try to take a 30,000-foot view of any situation, regardless of, you know, native Hawaiian, non-native Hawaiian. I mean, those things are important, but I think, you know, at the Board level and as, you know, as an island community, we all have to pitch in, we all have to do our part and have-- use our strengths and, you know, maybe play down some of our weaknesses and divides. So I, you know, I know discord will happen and I know that disagreements will happen and that's a very human thing. But it's also a very human thing to find resolution and I'm, you know, a staunch supporter of that.
All right, any questions you'd like to share, Senator?
So again, aloha. Back to the basically same kind of questions and it's obvious why I'm asking these because I feel very passionately about these questions and then I just kind of want to get your sense on, you know, the priorities of water and our water management, community-based fisheries, you know, and land division. Could you speak to each of those issues and your understanding of your responsibility of kuli'ana?
Whatever Member Barnes said. That sounded great.
Works out for you, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, since you put them all three in one, very complex and potent three in one.
We can break them up. So it's talking about water, you know, and the priorities of water.
Yeah.
How do you see that?
Look, everybody needs water. Just because, you know, there are, you know, priorities established, you know, pertinent rights to water. Again, I think those things are good as a matter of guidance as a matter of understanding the issues. But again, it's a human thing. I mean, water is one of the essential, you know, parts of life. And again, I think, you know, we all have our part in kuli'ana to play in trying to effectuate good change, positive change, meaningful change for future generations, right? So I think, you know, and it's exciting. You know, Amy's got her kids here and I'm a proud father of three girls and I look, you know, whatever I do, I do for them. And I think that's where our decisions, our seat of our decisions should come from.
So if there's a diversion occurring or we see it too sometimes with pumping, you know, we have a mission of water resource has to deal sometimes with overpumping. People are exceeding their allowances and things. Is it the Board's responsibility to kind of crack down and inquire and say, hey, you know, what do you have to do to get back on site? I mean, you guys are wasting water.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I think if there's any waste of any kind, you know, the Board has its appropriate time and place to deal with it. You know, we live-- we're an island community and we have to be as sustainable as we can. So any kind of waste is going to be problematic for anyone.
Right, and hence the original part when you, when things are renewed and reviewed, you want to make sure that people are truly demonstrating their beneficial diversion, right?
Sure.
Okay. Community-based fisheries comes down to the question of the local ike versus maybe other policies. How do you reconcile those?
You know, I had-- because there is just a very small amount of actual examples, I wanted to talk about Milo Li. I mean, we just heard from Milo Li community. I mean, this community has been at it for, I don't know, like three decades and it was amazing because you had every generation represented. We heard from each of them, even the kids, you know, from the school and everything. And, you know, they not only demonstrated their acumen as to what was, as to their area and their fisheries, but they've also been collaborative with the DLNR staff to come up with something quite in the middle. And that's, that's great. That's a good thing. And I think that that model should be emulated to more communities that are, you know, apropos to that kind of change.
That's good, finding a consensus.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And land division, land policies, leases, things, fiduciary. Have you perceived things that have come before you already? Maybe you can--
Yeah.
Think of an example where something had to be-- Think of an example where something had to be resolved.
I mean, yeah, I mean, everything, everything that comes pretty much needs resolution. But, you know, I think we're, we're coming at, you know, a lot of these leases are coming up and they're expiring, right? So and because you have long-term leases, you know, things that were agreed upon in the past may not be relevant or germane in our present, right? So looking at those things, our resources are finite, they're limited, and they're they're fragile and fleeting. So we're not talking 50 years ago, we're not talking 100 years ago, we're talking now, right? So and things have changed and we have, we have to change with that.
It always seems so far away, 50 years, right? And then it comes up.
Yeah.
Same thing though, when we renew these or we issue new lease, we do the whole new thing. People seem to forget, you know?
Yep.
They forget or they, they change their mind along the way. So sometimes I think you guys are put in a spot where you've got to make some tough choices.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Welcome, Senator Favella. We are on GM six eight six. If you have any questions, I'll be nominee. Okay. You know, something comes to mind. And we're talking about leases. And before this legislative session, we have several bills that's been moving that gives a perspective of decision-making, whether it's between the land division or the board. And for this year, I have a measure for consideration as well with decisions at the land board. I mean, the land division has the option to negotiate, not the option. They negotiate leases directly with the lessor, the leases and the lessor. Now, there is a measure that would, any, any decision-making that some of us here at the legislature feels should go to the board. And so we feel that actions would probably be handled as fast as possible, as soon as possible, within a timeframe. And let me say, and I think I shared that with you earlier in our discussions. I came to the Senate in 1999 and I stayed for 10 years. And I was in the midst, we were in the midst of talking about leases such as the Hilo area impacted more because they were displaced by the 1960 title wave. So the creation of the leases at that time and more so one whose company is over 100 years old. And I was here trying to assist, as an example, HPM. I was dealing with Bobby Fujimoto. I left in 2008. I was gone for six years. I returned to this chamber in 2014. And then we were also dealing with the same issue, but it was the grandson, the same company. So what we're trying to say is that these issues are not going away. And we know the law and you know the law as well. We talked about that. And so all we're trying to say is that rather put the burden on businesses who has to suffer the consequences of not making decisions in a timely matter. And so anyway, we've been discussing that, that issue. And I'm not sure if it will pass, but kind of just your manao because, you know, for us, it's a matter of frustration. But we know the laws that are currently in our constitution and the board as well must abide with the law that's currently here. And it's only a time factor that any changes to a law determines by the legislature. So just having said that, I want just a comment because you've been there two years now.
Yeah, and man, that's, that's a loaded one.
It is a loaded one because there's a discussion because sometimes even the the chair doesn't agree with us and members of it. So, you know, how do we accomplish something that doesn't keep on delaying? And, you know, I'll be gone someday. So the next generation of leaders are going to be, if we don't come to to some changes to how we're going to address leases on a timely basis.
Yeah, as far as procedurally, I mean, you have identified accurately that, yeah, we have our laws, you know, and rules and we must adhere to those rules. You know, the mere fact that you've been here for that many generations to, to expose yourself now to the person's grandson and still dealing with the same changes is kind of alarming, actually, if you think about it.
Yeah, it bothers me.
Yeah. Because one would think if, if you were in a place where you're trying to effectuate change and you go through two or three generations and things haven't changed, then perhaps we need to change the playbook a little bit. Perhaps we need to be a little bit more nimble and flexible or malleable. Or maybe the rules need to change. Don't know.
Okay, all right. Anyway, thank you, Senator Misalucha. We do have a quorum as well. And Ka'iivi, if they take a seat. Okay.
If I could just correct myself on the record, I meant to say Vice Chair Keith Agarwal.
The first name is.
Because we got the same name. We got two deals I have to deal with. Okay, members, normally the procedure, and for those of you in the public and on Zoom land as well, what chairs usually do when we have hearings, we're going to recess, decide what we're going to be doing. But I also, I'm one that moves things along as well with no objections that I've been hearing, none so far. So members, the chair's recommendation is to advise and consent on GM six eight three. And this is for the GM Amy Barnes for the term to expire June 30th, 2025. And GM six eight six, and this is the GM Wesley Yun for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Chair's recommendation then is to advise and consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. Thank you, Senator Misalucha for the vote. Chair goes aye.
Members, we are voting on GM six eight three. Chair recommends advice and consent. Chair votes aye. Senator Agarwal is excused. Senator Misalucha votes aye. Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella. Chair with four votes, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, and on to same recommendation for GM six eight six is to advise and consent. Chair goes aye.
Members, this is for GM six eight six. Chair recommends advice and consent. Chair votes aye. Senator Agarwal votes or excuse. Senator Misalucha votes aye. Senator Revere.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
With four votes, Chair, your recommendations adopted. Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
Members, we do have two items on the agenda, but the chair is going to call for a recess as well to welcome our and congratulate our GMs as well as take a break. I am called to another room and then I will be back. We will be back, members. We need to go to a vote on GMs in another committee. And we're going to go to conference room two to five. Oh, there's, there's bills. Oh, okay. Okay, and so we'll be recessing so we can congratulate our nominees. And we'll come back after we go to two to five. Okay, that's how busy we are, members. Okay, we're going into a recess. Good afternoon. The Committee on Water and Land is back at this hearing for Monday, March 21st out of recess. Members, we are on the agenda. And next up is HB 1653, House Draft Two, relating to aquatic resources. And this establishes our tiered administration fine system for each specimen of aquatic life taken, killed, or injured. DLNR? This is not you. Brian, are you there in Zoom land or David Socota?
Hi, good afternoon, Chair.
Hi, David.
Hi. So, yeah, Brian's not able to make it, but I'll be just standing on our written testimony in support of this measure. And we also proposed suggested amendment. It would address the Office of the Attorney General's concerns as well as, we believe, strengthen the penalties by adding a sentence that would allow the court to prohibit defendants from taking or possessing certain species of aquatic life in addition to the geographical restrictions and engaging in certain fishing activities and handling, operating, or possessing certain fishing gear. And I'm also available if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you, David. And we do have Attorney General Melissa Goldman, Deputy, aloha, welcome.
Aloha, Chair Noe, members of the committee. Deputy Attorney General Melissa Goldman testifying for the AG's office. We submitted written testimony with comments on House Bill 1653 regarding two provisions that were added to the original language by amendments. And we recommend a few revisions. Among other things, the bill authorizes the Department of Land and Natural Resources to recommend to a court that certain restrictions be imposed on a defendant as terms and/or conditions of probation for that defendant's aquatic resources violation. The bill would add identical language to that effect into several different sections of the HRS. So our recommended revisions would apply in each of those cases. Using the provisions in Section Three of the measure as an example on PDF page five of the House Draft Two. First, regarding the proposed subsection E1 at lines seven through nine, our office recommends that the language be amended to specify that the Department of Land and Natural Resources may recommend that the defendant be restricted from, quote, "entering specific geographical areas within the waters of the state" where aquatic resources may be found. The purpose of the recommendation is to ensure that state courts have jurisdiction over the waters that a defendant might be prohibited from entering following their aquatic resources violation. Second, regarding the proposed subsection E3 at line 10, we recommend that the words "or all" be deleted from the phrase "engaging in certain or all fishing activities" in order to avoid running afoul of Article 11, Section Six of the Hawaii Constitution, which does protect the public, the general public's right to access Hawaii's fisheries. And I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Members, we do have comments from the judiciary for this measure. We do have five in support, one opposition, and two sending in comments. David, I have a question with regards to what the Attorney General explained in her submittal. Is this the same as your recommendations in the Chair Case's testimony? Is it the same?
Yep, our recommendations would address the Attorney General's concerns and it conforms to the suggestions that their testimony recommends.
All right. Thank you, members. Any questions of HB 1653 to anyone? Okay, let's proceed then with HB 2006, House Draft One, relating to permits. And this requires for emergency permits to install sandbags that the BLNR include as a condition on the, on the emergency permit, a requirement for the attachment of identifying information, including the permit's contact information and the permit number to the sandbag. DLNR, Mike Kane, thanks for bearing with us today.
I guess. Nice to actually watch the conversation.
So good afternoon, Chair Noe, Senator Rivera, Michael Kane. On behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources, we stand on our testimony in support. If I can add two brief comments. In earlier testimony, we had expressed concern that the tags could become loose and create debris. After consulting with our coastal engineers, we now believe they can be attached securely. And that allowed us to change our position from comments to support. Second thing I would note is sandbags are permitted under different regulatory authorities. We can and will begin requiring the tags as a matter of practice effective immediately. So, and I'm available for any questions.
Could you describe what do the tags look like? Are they like little metal dog tags? Or how do they survive saltwater and?
Under our, we hadn't considered metal. We're looking at woven tags that would be sewed into the material.
So it'd be a cloth, a fabric.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that wouldn't bleach or fade or fall apart in the sun?
My assumption is, oh, we didn't discuss that. My assumption is it would be, I mean, the idea of the sandbags is they're partially buried. We will have to look into making sure they don't.
I just curious, general curiosity about how, I mean, it's a pretty harsh environment, so.
Yeah, yeah, we looked at debris. I didn't look at.
Probably similar material. I can see the materials either be one, maybe even stronger than the rice bags or one that can kind of breathe a little, you know, those, I'm trying to think, not canvas, but yeah, I, they'll, I'm sure they'll manage it. But having said that, though, those tags probably would have to be sewn onto the bags before they even fill it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, just.
All right.
Your specialty, but I was just, maybe plastic, engraved plastic or something. I know you don't want plastic in the ocean.
Well, you'll figure it out. The Department of Transportation does tag the rocks they use on their revendices in Kahava. So we can study their.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, that'll be good experience because I think we need that ASAP because the discussion on coastal erosion is right before us as well.
Correct.
Yeah, so you'll be ahead of the game. Okay, members, any further discussions on HB 2006? Otherwise, we are ready to make decisions on this one. In particular, I do have a quorum. So Senator, will you be able to help us then with the votes? Okay, standing by. Thank you. Okay. All right. We have Senator Revere taking this one. Okay, no worries. I'll just say, all right, members, we are going into decision-making for HB 1653, House Draft Two. And this is relating to aquatic resources. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We're going to adopt DLNR's proposed amendments as well as the Attorney General's amendments, which is almost the same. And we'll perfect the effective date to July 1st, 2022. Any discussions? Hearing none, Senator Revere for the vote. Chair goes aye with amendments.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Keith Agarwal.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Keith Agarwal is excused. Senator Misalucha.
Aye.
I vote aye. Senator Favella.
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Chair.
Thank you. HB 2006, House Draft 1, relating to permits. Chair's recommendation is to pass with the amendment that just perfects the effective date to July 1st, 2022. Any discussion? Hearing none. Senator Revere for the vote with amendments. Chair goes aye.
Noting the excused absence of Vice Chair Keith Agarwal, any members voting with reservations or in opposition? Reservations for Senator Favella? And all members others voting aye, except for the excused senator, and measure is adopted.
Thank you. Okay, this concludes today's agenda for Waterland, and we have some joints tomorrow. Okay, hello for your presence. Thank you so much.